I believe, and I just want to thank everybody for being here this evening with us, taking part in this regular meeting of the school board. With that, I will reconvene the meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board, as we do want to ask a member to certify closed session for us.
Mr. Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young, and Ms. Aller, if you can take that role.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. All right. At this time, we want to ask everybody to join us in standing to recognize the flag in our pledge of allegiance. Ms. Donner is going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Did I miss something? Stay standing. This is only going to take a second. We're going to approve our agenda real quick.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agendas presented.
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Donner, and thank you, Ms. Hunley, for the second. Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. All right. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, and thank you, Ms. Donner. I had a check already next to agenda, so thank you for keeping me awake. All right. We'll move on to announcements and superintendent's report. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. September is a attendance awareness month for good reason. Getting off to a great start starts with regular attendance from the very beginning. Missing just two days a month can affect students' grades, reading level, and even their likelihood of graduating, and it puts students on the path to be chronically absent, which the state defines as missing 10% or more of school days for any reason excused or unexcused. According to the Virginia Department of Education, students who miss two to four days of school in September are five times more likely to become chronically absent or miss 18-plus school days across the year. We all know students must be in school to learn, and we want to partner with families to ensure the success of all students. After much careful review and planning, the non-transportation zones at James River and D.J. Montague have been adjusted. A variety of factors led to this decision, including the determination that we could accommodate this shift within the current division-wide routing needs and staffing parameters. We appreciate the bus drivers who've taken on new routes or routes in addition to their existing assignments. Today was the first day of this change, and like the first few days of the school year, we appreciate families' patience and understanding as service is established. Next week, join Family Academy as we present WJCC Platforms 101, a jumpstart to getting connected. Next Tuesday, September 26th, come to James Blair Middle School from 6:00 to 7:30 p.m. to understand how platforms like ParentView, Canvas, and SchoolLinks can benefit your student. We will offer quick 15-minute tutorials in each session, along with additional support. Visit wjccschools.org to register in advance. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. All right. Are there any reports from board members?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Aye. Yes. Good evening, everybody. I recently had the opportunity to attend the New Horizons Board of Trustees meeting, and we had the opportunity to hear from the Center for Autism and Newport Academy, where they talked about their plans for family engagement this year. They also are encouraging peer coaching, and they also talked a little bit about their extended school year, which is eligible for students with IEPs. One of the most fascinating things I thought about this meeting is that they had several CIP projects, which is really interesting, because if you're interested in the CIP, which I am, but the engineering innovation and design space, the dental lab renovation, the criminal justice renovation, and electrical lab renovation, and these are areas where they've expanded them in some cases, but basically what they did was do a lot of work on the floor. I think that one of the things they were working on was polishing the concrete. I think, isn't that right? Yeah, Dr. Heron's nodding her head. But the thing that was, the best part of that, all that work was done by the staff there at New Horizons, which I'm sure saved a lot of money. The other thing that I thought was a great thing is that because New Horizons serve several school districts, six to be exact, they finally had MOU memorandum of understanding between the police departments from three different areas, which when there's an incident, they don't know who to call, but they finally have an MOU that whoever I think is available can come, and they represent all of them. Also, the welding lab expansion is being further pursued. The U.S. Navy is working in cooperation with New Horizons to get that expanded. The Navy must need welders. That's all I can say. But anyway, they also received a check for $50,000 to help expand things at New Horizons. And, Mr. Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Hunley.
Yes, so we, the Special Ed Advisory Committee, had their first meeting. We had lots of applicants, which is great, since sometimes in the past we struggled to make quorum, but we will not have that issue this year. They decided to address some of the recommendations from the J-Lock report, and so we're partnering with T-TAC, and we have a peer-mentor program now. Many of the members were present from our committee at the open houses at each of the schools, and more information will be coming for November 4th. There's going to be a parent training event from 9:00 to 2:30 with a keynote speaker, breakout sessions, and a wellness piece. We also had a middle school rep that reported that the PDs were very, very informational with sessions on de-escalation and expectations of IEP accommodations, and the highlight was an acronym game for trying to figure out what all the acronyms mean in special ed. And then we had a guest speaker, Mr. Jim Wheaton. He was the Director of Special Ed Advocacy at the Clinic of William &amp; Mary. And then there's also going to be, for action items for the future, there were some parents that are new, bright beginning parents, that would like to meet with veteran, bright beginning parents to help them navigate through special ed concerns. And then the biggest thing is to keep our committee up front and center and continue with the newsletters that are being read. And our next meeting, which is welcome to all, is on October 12th. That concludes my comments.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any other reports this evening? All right. We'll move on to staff recognitions. I do believe we have one.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we are excited to recognize the work of our finance team. Joining us is Ms. Renee Ewing, WJCC School's Chief Financial Officer. The Government Finance Officers Association of the United States and Canada has awarded a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting to Williamsburg James City County Schools for its annual comprehensive financial report for the fiscal year, which ended June 30th, 2022. The report has been judged by an impartial panel to meet the high standards of the program, which includes preparing annual comprehensive financial reports that evidence the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. The Certificate of Achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting, and its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by a government and its management. The finance team has also earned a certificate of excellence from the Association of School Business Officials International for meeting that organization's high standards for financial reporting and transparency, also for fiscal year 2022. Congratulations to Ms. Ewing and the finance team. Mr. Chair, this concludes the recognitions.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo. Really appreciate Ms. Ewing and the entire team that she leads. Don't know what we would do without you. So, thank you for all of your tireless work. All right. We're going to move on to item 61, public comment for the evening. Turn it back over to Ms. Ordigo.
It is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the board. Those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked not to engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings. Therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the board does not respond to your comments, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated two minutes to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair. My directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo.
Rob Whitehead.
My name is Rob Whitehead, and I serve as pastor of New Zion Baptist Church. I want to personally thank Dr. Heron and her team for the non-transportation zone challenge that we had. I'd like to thank them for getting that done and for clearing it up so that our students would have a good educational experience. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
John Gulick.
Good evening. My name's John Gulick. I'm a teacher and a parent of children.
Sir, can you raise the mic to yourself?
I'm a teacher and parent of, here in W.J. City County. I'm speaking to the school board, but and the community as a whole. As we start the school year, we're still experiencing the effects of lack of funding by our locality and the state. As of today, I think it's really important for people in the community to know that we still have 95-plus vacancies in our school division, including 20 classroom teachers. That equals hundreds of students that potentially don't have a full-time educator in the classroom. At the same time, York County, right down the road, also has 20 openings for teachers posted on their school website. On average, they pay about $5,000 more a year. So, it's going, the challenge is going to be real going forward. But as you know, we teachers are starting a path towards collective bargaining. I'm sure a lot of you assume a lot has to do with salaries and working conditions. But my time exploring this process, one of the things that keeps coming up is a fear of mediocrity in the school division. And one of the reasons I think we're pursuing collective bargaining is a way to make this a more attractive place for educators in our community to want to work and be in this division. And as we move forward in this process, I'm asking for the community's support. I'm asking for the board's support, because I feel like the people of James City County have an expectation of excellence in the schools, and we want to do our best in our part to maintain that. And as we move forward, we're just looking for your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gulick.
Janet Knox.
Hello. My name is Janet Knox. As a former educator, collective bargaining is something that I feel very strongly about. During my tenure as a middle school teacher, I would have benefited greatly from the opportunities that supports our teachers. For example, many times during my planning period, I was asked to fulfill duties outside of my contractual requirements, such as covering for other teachers, which oftentimes meant that my planning was done at home. In addition, I was often asked to chaperone numerous student activities outside of school hours. I did these tasks because of a willingness to be a team player and to do what was necessary for our students. But it was a situation that teachers should not be expected to graciously accept whenever requested. Teachers are asked to give up so much and make many sacrifices for our students. So, it's only right that we give them what they have been promised. This country is currently facing a serious teacher shortage. We do not want to lose more good teachers, and we want to also encourage some of our young people to look at this as a profession. With these simple gestures, we can continue to provide our current students and our future generations with an outstanding education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Knox.
Andrew Kason.
Hello. My name is Andrew Kason. I'm the treasurer of the Williamsburg James City County Education Association. I'm also a parent and a teacher. I'm here to give a collective bargaining update. I actually have really good news. We are collecting cards, authorization cards, at a very impressive rate. I can now say that we have reached over 500 signed authorization cards, well over 25% of total employees, and we are only halfway through Week 4 of the year. So, we, I think what the numbers show is that collective bargaining is, it's not a matter of if, but when. One does not have to think too hard about why WJCC employees aren't hesitating to sign these authorization cards. We are tired of getting along with less and less resources and people each year. We have an expectation of excellence, but we see slowly the school division slipping into mediocrity. I, for one, I graduated from Lafayette High School, and I had an excellent education, and I see my daughters coming up in the school system, and I am afraid of whether they will have the same opportunities I had. WJCC educators are reaching out for solutions to teacher burnout, which guts our building community and impacts very negatively student achievement. We are reaching out for solutions to provide more resources for students. We are seeking a seat at the table to determine our working conditions, because our working conditions are our students' learning conditions. We see student needs getting lost in the system, and we feel that there, it is imperative right now that the system must include more ground-level perspectives. We need a voice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kason.
Molly Robinson.
Hi. My name is Molly Robinson. I work with the Village Initiative, and I'm a third-year Ph.D. student in the American Studies Program at William &amp; Mary. My comment relates to the school board's policy on non-transportation zones. While I'm thrilled that buses will again be used to transport students in zones that were until recently deemed ineligible for bus service, I'm concerned about how we got here and the lasting impact of this policy decision on families, particularly those in the Long Hill Grove community by D.J. Montague. Yesterday morning, I met several parents and guardians and accompanied students on their walk to school. We walked in the rain during rush hour traffic. I counted at least four buses that drove by on Centerville Road. The students had nicknamed one of the large puddles we passed "The Lake", and one young student asked if there were fish in it. I understand that two administrators suggested NTZs in a May 2022 presentation at a closed school board meeting. The administration appears to have used an AI software called TransFinder to investigate bus route optimization in our division, but bus route efficiency should never come at the expense of student well-being and safety. Chapter 8 of Virginia's Administrative Code requires the board to craft policies that maximize bus route efficiency and student safety. Students and their families deserve an apology for the stress that this, an apology for the stress that this policy induced. In the future, the board should debate decisions of this scale and import with community input, not in closed meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson.
Barbara Cooper.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Cooper. I was employed by Williamsburg James City Public School for 44 years with three positions, bus driver, cafeteria worker, and teacher's assistant. Bus drivers started, bus drivers started in 1966 at $2 a day for runs. Held three positions, bus driver, bus driver and cafeteria in between, bus driver, teacher's assistant in between, mornings runs. Go to Chick Hall to transport students to Bruton Heights, and went to Currie Road to transfer students to Berkeley, worked in the cafeteria. In the afternoon, oh, then I carried roads to deport students to Berkeley. In the evening run, departed Berkeley, departed Berkeley, transported students back to Currie Road, and then went to Bruton Heights to transport students to Chick Hall. Left the cafeteria in 1971 and deployed as a teacher's assistant between bus runs. Stopped driving buses in 1994 with 28 years of service because unfair pay. Started full-time teacher's assistant in 1944, retired in 2010 with 44 years of service. Who knows what a pass-by seat, what they'd like in return the next day to pick them up. This situation is a harm's way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cooper.
Marco Sardi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Marco Sardi, the president of WJCEA, and a teacher here at James Blair. I speak to you today on behalf of many colleagues as we move forward in our collective bargaining process for all employees. Over the last few weeks, hundreds of staff have signed an authorization card from bus drivers to administrators, all saying they would like WJCEA and its members to have the ability to negotiate their contracts on their behalf. We encourage members of the board to consider how this process may be fully realized in WJCC schools to craft the best vision of our schools for students, staff, and our community. We are excited to see this process bring opportunities for our community to proudly support a strong public education system. And of course, that system is built on trust, trust between parents and teachers, and teachers to students. Unfortunately, the 2023 model policies put out this year target our LGBTQ students in Article 3. Each year, we teach that bullying is a zero-tolerance behavior in our schools. It is defined as an unwanted behavior meant to harm, intimidate, or coerce based on a perceived or real power imbalance. We stress this to show that they can come to us if there's a problem. Unfortunately, due to these policies, this has outlined a state-sponsored bullying system targeting a specific proportion of our students. I would need to personally enact it in my classroom, as I have many students who do not use their legal name while they're in school. I strongly urge the board to consider what these policies are promoting and to do what is best for our students when you are drafting your own policies for this year, which are so named on the grounds of privacy, dignity, and respect. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sardi.
Jessica Anderson.
Hi. I'm Jessica Anderson. I'm both a WJCC employee and parent, and I want to thank Dr. Heron and the school board for reversing the no-transportation zone decision. I truly hope that we can incentivize hiring more bus drivers as well to handle the burden that I think brought about that decision in the first place, and again, create more transparency with our families. I also came here to discuss the 2023 model policy introduced by the VDOE Andrew Junken's administration. I realize the board has not formally addressed this issue yet, but I want to be clear that this policy does not support parents' rights. The policy claims a parent can support their transgender student and do all the required documentation to allow for a possible name change and/or pronoun change in the school system. Yet, the policy then includes a caveat that educators and staff can refuse to accommodate said student and family requests because they claim it goes against their personal beliefs, discriminating against that student and ignoring the parents' rights. In addition, the policy states that if a transgender student is in the school building, the teacher and/or admin must alert all families in the classroom for elementary schools or all families and entire school population for middle and high schools of their existence, not only risking the privacy of this student and family, but possibly putting them in danger for discrimination, bullying, or far worse. We also need to recognize that the model policy is so extreme that the simple act of referring to a student named Samantha by Sam could require councilor intervention and leaving educators feeling very unclear on how to proceed. The entire model policy is a contradiction, claiming to want to harbor respect and privacy for all students and then providing guidance that permits the opposite to occur. Our governor also recently addressed a Our governor also recently addressed a concern around attendance, and I know that we are trying to address it as well, but the ignores that what we are providing adequate salaries for additional resources or even transportation to ensure students get to school and having their needs met once they're here. The recent adoption of WJCCs does not make exemptions for illnesses, and I have some concerns about creating an environment where students and families feel required to bring their six students to school, putting our students and families at risk. We already seen a massive uptick in COVID, which could require students to be absent upwards of five days, and flu season is quickly approaching. I would hope that you look forward to making sure that we're in a safe, healthy environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
LaShonda Dobson.
Are you okay?
Yeah, I'm good. Good evening. First, I'd like to thank you all for fixing the no-transportation zone because my children, my child is one of them. My second concern is the new attendance policy for the high school students. I would like to know if you all can address the fact of a child being suspended, as if the parent before me did speak of the COVID rates are going up again, and if children have to be out for five days or more, how would this affect the child's grades and attendance as far as them being failed after missing eight to nine days of school? So, that's my question. Hopefully, you guys can answer that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dobson.
Rachel Lenihan.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Lenihan. I'm a WJCC parent and teacher. I understand that Governor Junken's model policies regarding the treatment of transgender students in public schools will be decided on in the near future. I'm here to encourage you to not adopt these policies. The Division has always stressed inclusivity and equity. It is not inclusive and not equitable to deny a transgender student the right to be themselves, to be referred to by their preferred pronouns, to be referred to by their name of choice that aligns with their identity, and to be allowed to use a bathroom that aligns with their gender identity. Only with a parent's signature on a form would we be able to be inclusive, and this is not right. Schools are supposed to be safe havens for students. Under this policy, school counselors and trusted teachers and adults in our schools won't be able to acknowledge a student being transgender without a parent's signature on a form. So, we will ultimately have students without support at home coming to school without support being able to be provided. This lack of support will yield students feeling isolated, lonely, and scared with nobody to talk to. Teachers and staff members received suicide prevention training the week before school started, and we were reminded that LGBTQ youth are at a greater risk of suicide. Also feeling isolated is a risk factor of suicide. Students need to feel safe in our schools. As teachers, we teach character education per the Code of Virginia, which includes kindness, inclusion, respect, and compassion. We, as a division, need to follow suit. Many divisions have not adopted these policies. Fairfax and Prince William County, the two, states' two largest divisions, have probably said that they will not adopt these policies. Please do not adopt these policies. They are discriminatory, non-inclusive, and harmful to our students in WJCC. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lenihan.
Jaclyn Bridgeforth-Williams.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Dr. Heron, and members of the board. The Village Initiative values the relationship and partnership we have built with WJCC schools. We value and support the teachers, administrators, and each and every employee at WJCC schools. I am happy to hear that the children are back on the buses. I am glad that this decision was reevaluated and now safety and efficiency can meet. We were able to go out and walk the route taken by the children of Long Hill Grove and Powhatan Apartments communities. These communities lack the infrastructure to ensure safety for the students. We were told this was a decision based on efficiency. We ask that in the future, when changes must occur and decisions are made on efficiency and safety, we ask that the stakeholders, the parents, and the community members, along with the board, are present to ensure the best outcomes for the children and families of WJCC schools. Now, we will address another policy that has raised concerns by many in the community: the attendance policy. This policy is said to teach the children lessons they can take into adulthood. These young people deserve the same rights as adults in the workplace. Nine days and you fail? That's not the answer. Even the workplace allows for mental health and family days. Allowing grace for our young people is something we must practice and teach, and this policy fails to give the grace that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Michael Hosang.
Good evening. I come before you tonight to ask you again to have an inappropriate sign removed from one of our local classrooms in our high school. It's very concerning that I have just heard back from you today and several weeks, after several weeks, and still have not heard from the administration in almost a month after I've asked them to remove it. I asked initially to have a BLM flag removed from a physics lab, and while the principal removed it, she didn't remove a sign with multiple flags depicted on the sign. Strangely, one of those flags was a BLM flag, one was a gay pride flag, flags that have already been removed by the school board from the school classrooms. It is completely unacceptable for these flags, that they were even thought to be appropriate to be hanging in classrooms. Thus, it begs the question, what guidance have you provided to teachers and to principals? Clearly, you have deemed a gay pride and BLM flag to be inappropriate. So, why hasn't your guidance been provided to teachers, or why do teachers feel that they can ignore your guidance? And why has it taken so long for the administration and school board to act on such issues? I pointed out six different policies to the school board from the school system that you're supposed to abide by, which the school system currently is not. Why are you, the administration, principals, and teachers not following your policies? As I argued last year, there are only two flags that should be in any classroom: the United States flag and the Virginia flag. Since this is obviously not the case, I asked teachers to put up a Nazi flag, a Confederate flag, or a Gadsden flag, and see what happens at that timeframe. Better yet, why doesn't teachers put up a cross, a rosary, or a picture of God? And we'll see how long it takes before the school system asks them to take that down. I can tell you it's not going to take a month. These are public schools, not one's own personal indoctrination club. Now, most teachers and administrators know and do what is right, and they are to be commended. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hosang.
Corey Simon.
Thank you. My name is Corey Simon. I'm a WJCC parent. I have eight children, that, seven of them currently attend your schools. And I wanted to encourage and implore you to adopt the new policies proposed by Governor Junken. Just last year, at Hornsby Middle School where my seventh grader was attending, he ran into a situation where he was, he found himself in the boys' bathroom with a female, and it made him feel very uncomfortable. Picked him up from school that day. He was telling me he was distracted the rest of the day thinking about this situation. He already has ADHD. I contacted the HR department, filed an official complaint. They came back. They said they saw nothing, no need to do anything about that. And, I mean, the thing is, is that there is only, there's roughly 800 kids at Hornsby. I'm using that as an example this year. And there, last year, there was two transgender students, one male, one female, that were using the bathrooms not of their biological sex. So, that's, that's one quarter of 1% of students that are being accommodated instead of the other 99 point whatever, the vast majority. And there are special bathrooms that, you know, individual bathrooms, if a transgender student does not feel comfortable using the bathroom of their biological sex, they can use those bathrooms. But the other, all of the other students should not suffer who are using the bathroom of their biological sex, and they shouldn't be segregated to use separate bathrooms, and they're not the ones who are choosing to make a decision to try to change their gender. So, I just want to encourage you to adopt the policies, and I don't feel like it's in any way, you know, bigotry or discrimination to allow people to uphold their religious beliefs and not be forced to use pronouns of somebody else. They can simply use the name, and that should suffice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simon.
Max Blalock.
Good afternoon. I'm Max Blalock. I'm a resident of James City County, and I have two sons in the school system, and it's all good to see you all again. Thanks so much for the decision on the no-transportation zones. I really appreciate that, as do so many families on making that decision and reversing, I should say, reversing that decision. And the fact that that decision was made and thinking about so many of the decisions that are upcoming concerns me because the administration of our schools and the school board and the staffs and the teachers have a really simple job to make sure that our children are safe and well-cared-for and receive an excellent education. And when a decision gets made that puts some of our most vulnerable children at risk, then that is very concerning about that decision being made in the first place, and it's very concerning about decisions that are upcoming. We've heard folks talking about the attendance policies. We've heard folks talking about the model policies that are coming down from the state government that are recommended to the school board. And I ask you to be more creative, more collaborative, and more compassionate in decision-making. Seek out families and students who are going to be most affected by these decisions and listen to them and learn from them. And let's work together as administration, as school board, as a community to do what's best for our students, especially our most vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blalock. Thank you to all of our speakers that have joined us this evening and participating in our meeting. And with that, we'll move on to item seven of our agenda. Turning over to Dr. Heron for discussion of the fiscal year 2023 year-end financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This evening, Ms. Ewing, our chief financial officer, will give us an update on end-of-year funds for the fiscal year 2023. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This evening, I will be presenting to you our preliminary financial status as of June 30th and the year-end surplus that will be returned to the localities. It is important to note that we have not gone through our external audit at this point, so these numbers are preliminary and unaudited. However, my team and I have worked hard to make sure the information presented this evening is as accurate as possible. But as we go through the audit process over the next several weeks, these numbers could change slightly.
Ms. Ewing, can we bring the mic closer?
Sorry.
It's okay.
Is that better?
That is.
Okay. Here, you will see a breakdown of our actual revenue as compared to our adopted budget. Our actual revenue for the year is 162.3 million, which is approximately 2 million more than our adopted budget. This is mainly attributable to increased state revenue of 1.6 million, with the majority coming from increased sales tax funds of 1.4 million. Our expenditures in open encumbrances amount to 152.7 million for the year, and we have 120,000 of prior year encumbrances that were carried forward that would be canceled. And when you compare these amounts to our revenue, the amount of funds remaining at the end of the year amounts to 9.6 million, which will be returned to the localities. Based on the new contract for the joint operations of the school division, 90% of this amount, or 8.7 million, would be maintained by the localities in a future school use account, and 10%, or approximately 963,000, will be retained by the localities. So, what makes up the surplus? The funds left at the end of the year are a combination of two things. The first is the revenue that we received in excess of our appropriation in the amount of 1.9 million, which had no matching expenditure appropriation to allow spending of the excess revenue. The second is the savings on the expenditure side in the amount of 7.6 million. The majority of the savings, 6 million, is from salary and benefit savings from open positions. Our staffing fluctuated month to month throughout the entire school year across all areas of the organization. As an example, on the vacancy listing for the week of January 23rd, 2023, we had a total of 48 open positions, which included positions across the division from instructional to operational. With positions being vacant for longer periods of time, the amount of savings ended up being higher than our normal annual attrition savings.
May I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Can you repeat that timeframe for those 48 vacancies?
It was on the vacancy listing for the week of January 23rd.
Okay, thank you.
In addition, with Esser Grant funds expiring in the next year, we've shifted expenditures from the operating fund to Esser Grants to ensure all grant monies are expended. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
All right, questions for Ms. Ewing? Any at all? I think the plan is that this is nothing actionable for the board, but I think in history reminds me, we've typically sent a letter explaining essentially what you've just explained to the board. We send a letter to our funding partners outlining what will be returned to them, and I thank you for their support to the schools. We'll be doing that this year?
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you. All right, last chance for questions for Ms. Ewing. All right, thank you, Ms. Ewing. Appreciate the report.
Mr. Chair, if I could just add one thing, would suggest to the board maybe for their consideration that when we do pass back formally the money to the city and county, obviously, 90% is going into a school use fund. Currently, our pre-K centers are underfunded in the CIP, and if the board should so choose, we would put in that letter from the chair that we would like that money allocated to fully fund our pre-K spaces, if that's, if that's something you wish to consider.
I'll open it up to the board. Is that anything that we should not do? I feel like that's reasonable.
Yeah, that's very reasonable.
Thank you. Dr. Heron, we'll do that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda for the evening. If I can have a motion, request a motion to approve item 8.1, financial report and monthly bills and payroll for June 2023. Item 8.2, approval of financial report and monthly bills and payroll, payroll for August 2023. Item 8.3, approval of minutes from August 15th of 2023. Item 8.4, approval of minutes from September 5th of 2023. Item 8.5, approval of resolution R-16-23, bullying prevention month, month of October. Item 8.6, approval of resolution R-17-23, National Hispanic Heritage Month. Then, item 8.7, approval of release from compulsory attendance case number R2324-06, R2324-07, and R2324-08. Is there a motion on the consent agenda as presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, and Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. Thank you. We'll move on to our action items for the evening. If I can have a motion to approve the personnel actions.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the personnel actions as presented.
Ms. Hunley, is there a second on this motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Donner, and Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. Item 9.2, if there's a motion to approve the amendment to the fiscal year 24 grants fund budget.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the amendment to the fiscal year 24 grants fund budget to $11,990,005. Second.
$11,990,005. That's what I heard?
11,990, 990, 990, 990,000.
I'm just confirming. Thank you, Ms.
We'll make sure I said that right.
Ms. Donner, thank you, Ms. Ordigo, for the second. Any discussion on this item? It's just a bit of housekeeping business to make sure our grants fund is balanced at the end of the year. Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye. All right, item 9.3, if I can have a motion to All right, item nine-three, if I can have a motion to approve the twenty-three, twenty-four textbook selection and adoption proposal that we received last.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the twenty-two-three, twenty-four textbook selection and adoption proposal as presented.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Ordigo, and the second. Ms. Hunley, any discussion on this item? So what we're looking at, the proposed courses for textbook selection and adoption just for the public's sake of information under content literacy, K-five core curriculum, world languages, American Sign Language, math, Algebra II, Algebra II and trigonometry, and then science, encompassing chemistry, physics, anatomy and physiology, environmental science, AP chemistry, and AP physics. There's quite a bit more. Won't go through them all. No questions for staff? No discussion on this item? Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye.
All right, item nine-four, if I can have a motion to approve the purchase requests of cellular amplifiers, associated equipment, and installation.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the purchase requests of cellular amplifiers, associated equipment, and installation using the Fairfax County Public Schools Cooperative Contract Number four-four zero-zero-zero one zero-nine-five-seven to the CDW-g for a total cost of two hundred forty-four thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Is there a second for this motion?
Second.
I think that was Ms. Hunley. Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Any discussion? This came about essentially to support safety and communication within the schools. Not all cell phone carriers really provide great, great coverage within our school buildings, and so this allows for teachers, faculty, and staff to be able to communicate in a more efficient, effective manner. And because it is over a hundred thousand dollars, this comes before the board for approval. The affected schools are Matthew Whaley, Lawrence Hornsby, Matoka Elementary, JB Blatton, and Norge Elementary. For now. Okay. All right, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye.
All right, and our final action item on the evening. If I can have a motion to approve the purchase request of human resources information system and implementation services, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, I approve the purchase request of human resources information system and implementation services to Power School using TIPS Contract Number two-one-zero-one-zero-one for a total first year cost of a hundred and seven thousand, four hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-five cents, and an annual renewal cost of sixty thousand, one hundred and one, one, sixty thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighteen cents.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Is there a second on this motion?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Again, open up to discussion, questions or clarifying remarks. Okay, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Mrs. Donner.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Dow.
Aye.
Okay, thank you all for that. Our rounding out our agenda this evening before board member comments. We do have a proposed agenda item take up now. If there's any further discussion, I imagine there would be in closed session. We did hear from senior leadership who are appointed over three committees. This was the Student Advisory Committee, the Special Education Advisory Committee, and the Career Readiness Committee. And essentially providing the committee appointments for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. I think if I'm not mistaken, we had all of our questions answered on those appointments. And we will take this up as an agenda item, action item in our next meeting. Okay. With that, we'll take up board member comments. If I can start with Ms. Donner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to, we've had lots of community engagement around the non-transportation zone. And so as a board member, where I think maybe, I don't know if Dr. Herron will address any of this, but as a board, it's not a decision that we get to make, right? We set a policy and the, and the administration gets to make that policy. But I think what's really important is that, right, as a, as a community, when we realize that we make policies or make decisions that adversely affect students and that we need to be able to reverse, I just want to commend Dr. Herron and Mr. Snipes and the staff and the three bus drivers that stepped up to be able to provide transportation to our students. I think that is the, you know, that is the kind of community that we want to work in, and that we do make mistakes. We do, we do have the ability to recognize when we need to make a different decision, and so being able to do that. So thank you, Dr. Herron and your staff for doing that. I don't know if Dr. Herron gets to share about it, but I think that there's a lot of misunderstanding amongst, in the community around our, around the, the attendance policies. And so I'm sure Dr. Herron and her staff will be able to provide some clarity around that because we do want students to be healthy when they come to school. We do recognize that there are, you know, other circumstances, and I think probably some further clarification will quell a lot of the consternation that folks are feeling and that we as a school board are on board with making sure that everyone is healthy and safe. And so I think some of that, that clarification might be forthcoming, which will be helpful. And, and just want to say thank you to Ms. Ewing and her team, and congratulations. You know, as we look and we return nine million dollars back to the localities, you know, as we hear about all the different needs and that view of, wow, why would we return the nine million? But it has to do with the way that we have to do our budgeting. And I think us as school board members and as an administration just really appreciate Dr., Ms. Ewing and her team to make sure that we are complying with Virginia law that doesn't allow us to overspend. And then having made those deals with the, with our localities to be able to put that into use as we are going to do with our, with our new, with our bright horizons and bright beginnings. Lastly, I had the opportunity to attend an event about from, with the Military Child Education Coalition and got a lot, got the opportunity to learn a lot about military-connected children. And one of the programs they talked about is the Purple Star Program. And was really excited to see that at least last year, two of our schools are Purple Star Schools, both Lawrence Hornsby and War Hill. And that designation just is a way that those schools are welcoming to military-connected children and making sure that they have a soft place to land as they follow their parents with their various deployments. So really excited that we are supporting military families. And with that, those are my remarks.
Thank you, Ms. Donner. Ms. Hunley.
Yes, I'd also like to thank Dr. Herron and her team for, it's never too late to make the right decision with the no-transportation zone. And as a, a board member that walked with families, it, it helps me to sleep well to know that our, all our children are safe. Also, I'd like, I love the way the community stepped up, the York and Jame City County NAACP, the faith-based community, the village, and other community members to advocate for our children. The bus drivers, we need bus drivers. And I was just wondering, the teacher is coming back in me, if there was a project that maybe our high school students or someone could do where we could do a recruiting video to put out in the community, maybe to attract some people that are sitting home that might be interested in riding the bus, I'm, or driving a bus. I'm not sure if people are afraid that children misbehave on the bus, and so they're, so maybe to do a day in the life of a bus driver and a video that maybe use it as a recruiting tool. And maybe somebody will see that and say, well, oh, that's not too bad. I could drive a bus. So I'm just pitching that out there if there's any teachers or students that would be interested in that. Because our students are very, they're very knowledgeable. And I met with two scouts today, young women, young ladies, I'll say young ladies, they were seniors at War Hill. And their troop, they have to apply for a citizen in the community merit badge. And they wanted to talk about the, get my impression on the, this, the split of the county and city, you know, what's going on. And so I was able to talk with them and give them some information and some videos to watch from the meetings that have already happened. And it was nice to see young people getting involved in what affects them or may affect them. And so we do have young people that can help us solve problems as well. And so we need to make sure all our stakeholders are involved. Those are all my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Dr. Beers.
I just have a, a couple of things to say. I, I think, I just would like to remind everybody that all students, regardless of their background, their religious belief, their ethnicity, their orientation, are all welcome at all of our schools. And we have to remember that every time we hear talk about trying to isolate or muzzle teachers, students, or administrators in trying to hide some of our really gifted students. And I just hope that everybody remembers that, that you can start off in a small way, and it can creep and get larger and larger. And I just, I'm fearful of that. So that I hope our board, parents, administrators, teachers, even the students recognize that it's really important to honor and appreciate all of the students that we have in our schools.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Young?
Right, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. First of all, I just want to do a shout out to our support staff, to our bus drivers. It's wonderful when we have bus drivers that step up and, and are willing to, to do a little bit more. But we also have custodians. Having been in other schools, our buildings are some of the cleanest I've ever seen. I won't say that I could eat off the floor, but it's getting close. Our clerks, our cafeteria workers, our teachers assistants, I want you to know that, that we appreciate you and, and respect you, and we, we need you, or we don't function very well without you. Secondly, Ms. Ewing, do you have a wall with plaques of all of your awards? Because she, we certainly, as a school division, have lucked out having her on our staff. And thank you so much for all your hard work. It's a good thing you're not afraid to give presentations. Lastly, I just wanted to address the attendance policy. I agree with Ms. Donner. I do think there is some misunderstanding of the attendance policy. The intent is not to punish students, but to get students to school. We're coming out of a COVID climate, and, well, we might be going back into one, who knows? But one of the things that, as I go and talk to different people, one of the things that has happened since COVID, we have a work ethic problem in our society where people don't want to go back to work. They got very comfortable staying at home. And I mean, you hear that even on newscasts that people, you know, or their boss wants them to come back into work, and they don't want to go. Well, I think that also has affected our thinking about coming to school. And as a school board, I look at the attendance policy. I think it's generous. And I might be, I don't think I'm the only one, but I do think there is some real misunderstanding of where you need to be every morning, if you're a student, except Saturday and Sundays. You need to be at school. Unless you're, you're sick. And if you read the policy, it's, it's very generous about that. If you, if you've read the policy, you, you see where it's headed. The nine absences that were mentioned is per semester, not per year. Nine classroom absences. But you heard Dr. Herron said ten percent abstinence affects your grade. It also affects your attitude. If you get to the point where you're so far behind, of course, you're not going to want to come to school. Of course, you're not going to want to be there. It's important to come. We have excellent teachers, and our teachers are dedicated to making sure that our students learn. So please, when you go back and read the policy, and I can almost assure you that, having been on this board for a long time at this point, this school division bends over backwards to help students, which we should. That's, that's the job. But on the other hand, we all have responsibilities. And I used to tell my own kids that their job, and they do have a job if they're a kid, and their job is to be in school. It's, and that, because that job is going to prepare them for their future. If you don't make it through high school, and I had two sons who did not finish high school, which they both got their GEDs, and fortunately, it was before the military wouldn't let you have a GED. And they've been very successful. One now has a master's degree in, in technology, which I won't even try to tell you the name of his job. But they're, they both have done very well. But they both have told me over and over again, Mom, why didn't you make us stay in school? And I know when a kid is six foot two, looking at you and tell you he's not going to school, you know, you don't have much choice. But fortunately, my kids woke up, but other kids aren't waking up. So our attendance policy is that if you're a parent who's concerned about it, please go back and reread it. And then, and then think about where you are with, with your kids. I think all of us on this school board are, are parents. We've all been there, and we want your kids to succeed. That's, that's the bottom line. I don't think you've ever heard this school board say that we want kids to fail. That's never been our intent. We want kids to succeed in the things that they do because later they're going to have amazing choices if they go to school. If they don't finish high school, their choices become dimmer, and we don't want that. We want them to succeed. So please get them to school, and I can tell you that, that we probably will do almost anything to help you do that. So, Mr. Chair, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Hummel?
Thanks. I wanted to speak real, real briefly, just to thank all of the, the people who came out to speak tonight. In particular, as Mrs. Donner said, this, the non-transportation zones is clearly an administrative decision. And I want to thank Dr. Herron and the administration for kind of recognizing and doing the very, very difficult work of trying to acknowledge the hardship that the community felt, acknowledge it, and then work really, really hard in a short amount of time to, to try to find a solution. So I just wanted to, to thank everyone involved in that. And we need the community to, to be proactive like they were. We appreciate it. We, we need those eyes, eyes on the decisions that are being made. We need people to actually go out and walk. The walk and talk, the talk about some of the decisions that we make and, and let us know what you think. So I think this was just an example of, of something that worked out really well when we had a partnership between the overall community and the administration. So thanks, everyone, for, for being involved, for recognizing the issues and solving the problem. As far as the attendance zone, or sorry, the attendance policy, as many of you know, this is really directly related to the accreditation of our schools. It's coming from our governor, from the State Department of Education, and it's in the legislature. It's, it's a recognition across the state of Virginia that we need kids to be in school. And if they're not in school, it's going to affect the accreditation of our school. And if, if you think there's a hardship with an attendance policy issue, just wait until a school is not accredited and see all of the hoops that everyone has to go through in order to get that school re- and see all of the hoops that everyone has to go through in order to get that school re-accredited. So it is a serious issue, and there will be waivers for people with chronic, uh, health conditions, as Ms. Young said. We were all parents. The administration, they have kids, they care for kids. So please don't think it's going to be draconian in that respect. I also would like to say, you know, for me personally, I had kids that were on travel teams. We would, we would make vacation plans sometimes and have to think, gosh, you know? The crowds would be so much, you know, smaller if we took our kids out of school and did our vacation during school. Um, and those are the kind of decisions that everyone's making. And we have to make sure they're making the right decision for their kids and not for vacations and travel sports. So just wanted to say that. And then once again, thanks, Ms. Ewing, for always doing the great job that you do. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Ms. Ordigo?
Thank you, Mister Chair. Just a, a few brief comments because really a lot has already been said. Thank you to everyone that came out and spoke. I, I'm always encouraged when I, when I see a full room because I think that it's important for everyone to engage in, um, their local government and, and self-governance. And I, so regardless of what the topic is and what the comment is, I'm, I'm happy to see the community come out and speak. I, I feel a little disheartened because there were a number of things that were said in various comments that, that weren't quite accurate. And I don't, I don't lay that at the feet of the speakers, per se. I, I, I'm not saying that anyone said anything intentionally inaccurate, but there were some inaccuracies. And, um, so I, I guess I, perhaps that's on us and, and our communication with the community. But I, there's one thing, um, there was one comment that said that we had made, that this body had made a decision about, uh, non-transportations in, in a closed session, and that is simply completely untrue. That would be illegal, and that did not happen. So I, it would be dangerous for people to go out and, and believe that that's what had happened because it didn't. And I don't fault the speaker. I'm, I'm sure she thought that's what happened. But, um, I just don't want anyone going away here tonight thinking that that, that's what happened. And so I think, you know, perhaps as a, as a body, us seven, seven of us do need to think about how we are directly communicating with our community and our constituents because something's getting lost in translation. And so, um, I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Ms. Ordigo. And I, I don't disagree. I, I do appreciate public comment because it gives us an opportunity to find out where the gaps are in communication and understanding within what's going on within the division and, um, being related to the community members. Now, I, no, absolutely did not take place any, any business that, uh, was community, um, what was meant for the community was not done in closed session. Uh, that would be unlawful. And so we, we do check ourselves regularly to make sure that we are on topic every closed session. We don't fear from that. And the smallest inkling of a conversation that's outside of the realms of closed session, which that would not have been, uh, we, we, uh, we correct each other, and we're, I'm pleased with the way that we do that. I do need to ask again, in the vein of thanks that weren't entirely accurate, um, that was her today. It would be news to me if we still had ninety-five vacancies at our teacher corps. I think that's grossly inaccurate.
That's correct. I think we've got four right now.
Four. That, that was my understanding. Four teacher vacancies that we are, Mr. Baker, with the leadership of Dr. Heron, feverishly looking to fill. Uh, but that amounts to about ninety-nine point six percent of our teacher staffing, which is an incredible feat by, uh, Mr. Baker and your team. And we appreciate that. And we appreciate you continuing to go back and, uh, and, uh, look at how we can fill those four spots. Not ninety-five, four. Um, it was also mentioned that perhaps the school board, as I heard it from the speaker, had, uh, removed flags, um, from classrooms. That was not the case last year. That has not been the case this year. Uh, the board does set policy. We set policy, we adopt a budget, we do have oversight responsibilities. With those policies being established, the superintendent has a responsibility to implement those policies through regulation and procedures. Um, and so the question that is being raised with a certain...
Poster.
Poster. It was mentioned flags, but poster that has flags on them. Um, at the moment, it is an administrative decision. Now, what is happening is I am working with my board colleagues to determine if there is a policy violation in relation to that, and that does take time because there are seven of us. And I appreciate the patience on that. But at the moment, it is an administrative decision. No school board member has had any, um, sway to determine what is going to be hanging on a classroom wall. That would be well outside of our purview. Want to move on to, uh, upcoming events, which include a VSBA Legislative Advocacy Conference. I know there are a few members that will be attending that meeting, that conference, excuse me, on September twenty-first, which is going to be in Midlothian at the Chesterford Career, Career, tongue-tied here, Career and Technical Center. Okay. The members here are attending virtually. Um, there isn't in-person.
I'm in person. She's first.
All right. Throw me forward. All right. On October eleventh, at three-thirty, there's a Career Ready Advisory Committee meeting, um, in room three hundred of the annex. And on October twelfth, there's a Special Education Advisory Committee, Committee meeting, uh, at six-thirty, uh, again, at the annex, room three hundred. And then upcoming meetings, uh, closed session and our work session, four and four-thirty respectively on October third. That's in, uh, room three hundred of the annex. And then closed session and regular me, meeting, which also includes a public hearing on the recommended, the superintendent's recommended capital improvement plan, uh, October seventeenth, at six and six-thirty, room three hundred for the closed session, and back here in the gymnasium for the public hearing and the regular meeting. All right. I think that does it for this meeting. I appreciate everybody. We, we've got a great attendance that stuck around to the very end. So thank you very much. And I appreciate, again, the, the public comment to help us understand what we need to do better at, um, communicating. Thank you. Have a great evening.